Hi, good evening. The time is now 4:36 PM. Good evening and welcome to the October 16th, 2024 Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Meeting. My name is Pamela Boozer-Struther and I'm the Vice Chair of the Committee and the District III Board of Education Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting and I look forward to our work tonight. Ms. Adeline, please call the roll.
Dr. Kenneth Harris. Ms. Boozer-Strather.
Present.
Donald Bell.
Present.
Kate Wunderlich. Yasi Gomez. Joseph Jakuta. Christina Quach.
President.
Timothy Meyer.
Present.
Dorothy Morrison.
Present.
David Norto.
Present.
Beth Novick.
Present.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ramon Pelisia Calvo. Benjamin Roche. Antoine Thompson. James Dubois Garcia. James. I see him there. Olivia, sorry, Maya Gudera.
Present.
Maya Gudera.
Present.
Is James there with you too, Maya?
No, he's not. He's trying to get on.
Okay. Olivia Thomas.
She's here, in here.
Arthur.
Sofia Villar.
And let's get.
Michael Witherspoon.
Yeah, present.
Eleven, present. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you so much. With a quorum present, the Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Meeting will come to order. Adoption, 1.4, the adoption of the meeting agenda. The question is, shall the committee adopt the October 16th, 2024 Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Meeting Agenda? If, if there, if, if there's no opposition, we, we can move forward. Any discussion or opposition? Hearing none, we will, the agenda is adopted. 1.5, approval of the meeting minutes. If there are no objections, the committee shall approve the June 26th, 2024 and September 11th, 2024 Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Meeting Minutes as distributed. And those can be found in board docs. Not hearing any objections, the June 26th, 2024 and September 11th, 2024 Climate Change Action Plan Ad hoc Committee Mean Meeting Minutes as distributed are approved. Moving to 2.0, discussion items. We will limit each member's questions and feedback to 2.5 minutes per round. There will be two rounds per agenda item unless a motion is taken for additional rounds. And so we will start with the, the 2.1 Director Sustainability Report. The Chair Rec, the Vice Chair recognizes Dr. Morrison for the sustainability report.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Boozer-Strather. By the way, it's, it's Director Morrison's fine, Dorothy's fine too. It's not a doctor, but I'll take the promotion though. I could, I was correcting Cindy the other day. Anyway, so this will be, this will be short because I know we had a meeting and I give an update last month. So I'm just going to touch on anything new that has, I guess, occurred in these six categories here that I have on the, on the, I guess, rolling agenda. Cindy, do you want to just, do you want to put that up or, okay, that's fine. I'll, I'll wait for Cindy to put that up. Okay, so as you all know, I'm just longing for the day that I will announce, yes, we have our second person program manager. But unfortunately, we're not there yet, but we're plugging away at it. We were able to, we had interviews in September. Early October, we had second round of interviews and we have narrowed it down to one candidate, but we're in the process of checking references. So hopefully that will pan out and by next meeting, we will report that we have a second program manager that is going to help us drive the climate action and sustainability within the school district. So that's the update on the staffing side. Also, just wanted to just, I know most of you may be aware, there was a media event that we held on October, was it the 4th or the 7th? I think it was October the 2nd. I got my, all my dates wrong here. On October the 7th at El Machoa, and the purpose really was just to, for us to showcase all the wonderful things we're doing in Prince George's County with regards to renewable energy, climate action, and we felt like we needed to sort of say what we're doing so that folks will, you know, we just shout out loud. Sometimes you gotta shout out loud what you, other good stuff you're doing. So that went really well. It was well attended. We had representatives from federal, state, local government, community folks. Businesses were there, so it was, it was a really good get together and we had our board members there. Obviously, Board Member Boozer-Strathers as well as Dr. Harris were there. Boozer-Strathers were able to present awards to the Climate Change Action Committee Work Group, I guess it was called at the time. These are the people who came together and worked for tirelessly a year and a half plus to, to come up with a climate action plan that we are all so proud of and willing to implement. And so awards were given to members of the work group. So I thought that was a really nice gesture to, on behalf of the board members. Dr. Harris also gave a small educational talk at the start of, we did a tour of El Machoa because as you all know, it's a Net Zero School geothermal and he was able to give us an educational talk about the mechanics of geothermal. And so that was also a nice touch. And we toured the building. We also had an electric school bus on site that we were able to, to tour and, and did a bunch of photo ops. So just wanted to share that with everyone. We will continue to look for opportunities where we can, you know, talk the good work that is going on in the county. So let's, let's, Cindy, do you want to just scroll down? This is, these are just, I just left these links here with annual reports for folks who want to like, you know, click on it and, and, and see what that's all about. So continue going with regards to the electric school bus micro, wait a minute. Hold on. Can you go back up, down? I guess, no. Okay, so we do have, and I know we have Sean here who can probably speak on it more if there's some specific questions. But we've been having weekly project meetings for our electric school bus micro grid project. And this is an infrastructure build out at the Molican Bus Lot in Bowie State, I'm sorry, Bowie, not Bowie State, but Bowie. And we're hoping to have 90 school bus chargers from that facility. So exciting because I, I know that Director Baldwin, who's probably now on this car right now, was very nervous about, you know, acquiring all these school buses and not having the infrastructure to charge them. So with this pilot project, it gives us the infrastructure to go with the buses that we are applying for. So with that, going on to, moving on to the grants and revenue opportunities. I know folks were interested in knowing what we are doing with regards to grants. We continue, continue to feverishly apply for grant opportunities to supplement our limited financial resources that we have in the school districts. And currently we are applying for, I believe it's up to $40,000 FY25 MEA Solar Canopion Dual Technology Grant, and that's hopefully will offset the Molleton Micro Grid Project. And also going along with that, Cindy, do you mind going on to the next bullet? There's also another grant, also from MEA, and it's called the Resilient Maryland Program for Capital Support. And we're hoping that, you know, if awarded these funds, we'll use them to buy down the capital for a lot of these project investments that we are, we are making. So we are applying for those two grants and I believe I reported on some of the other grants that we had pursued during September. So I'm not going to say that. I'm not going to go over them. They're right there for you to see. But also just wanted to give an update. We were also considering the Community Change Grant, which was anywhere from 10 to 20 million to, to help support. There was a list of things, but as you all know, federal grants can be kind of, they are not for the fated part, as our grants office usually say, but, so we, we had a nonprofit partnership approach us, but it didn't, it didn't work out. The lift was a lot and given the timeframe, you may or may not know, this is, it's a rolling grant and it's been around since last November. So we're kind of like at the tail end of it in terms of trying to apply for the grants. So we decided to not pursue this one at this time and pursue some of these other grants that we're more likely to get. So, so that's kind of, I just wanted to give folks a status update on, on that particular grant opportunity. On a more positive note, we have a consultant that hopefully, keep my fingers crossed, because I think it was yesterday that we went ahead and had the, I guess it's called recommendation. I'm, I'm trying to think of the terminology. Notice to proceed, recommendation of award, I guess is what the county calls it. And so once we have them on board, we will be able to, we'll hopefully have the capacity or greater capacity to apply for some of these grant opportunities. So, so we're excited to sort of announce that. What else? With regards to, and again, so let me just, Cindy, if you could click on the hyperlink because what I want to show here, I mean, I just kind of just, right now, we just kind of just listed the grant here. But we've also developed, we're developing this database of, we're calling C cap related investments. So we want to be able to capture all the investments that we're making towards implementing the C cap. So for example, it could be from general funds. Ooh, I thought that would happen. Unit access. Okay, so let me walk seconds, Cindy. Do you want to go back? I wonder if I can give you access from? Well, no, I can't, not from here. Okay, but anyway, it's a spreadsheet that pretty much has all the priority areas and it shows the grants we, we went back like a two-year timeframe. So all the grants we've applied for to date, the ones that we are currently applying for, and we're waiting to, to see if we'll get a notice of award. And another column talks about like potential grant opportunities and then a status update. So, you know, we want to be able to kind of go to these and kind of show all the effort we're, we're putting into trying to get resources to implement the C cap. So that's, that's, we're working on that and I'll, I'll get that link to, Cindy, I can figure out a way to, maybe if you send me an email, I don't know how that works. I can probably grant you access so we can, you know, so the board members can, can access that, that Excel database. And lastly, just letting everybody know that we continue to, you know, sort along with regards to meeting with each of the departments one-on-one. So what that means is we are looking at the functions of each of the departments, how those day-to-day functions would implement the C cap or they need to do to improve on those functions so that we're better aligned with, I'm having some sort of a roadmap that, that helps us to show progression towards meeting our goals, our climate action goals. So today we have done seven out of the eight operational departments. And I can tell you this, you know, it has been so helpful to us, especially those of us who needed the school system. Specifically Sheila and myself, you know, I literally, oh, today's my first year anniversary with the school system. So I just sort of put it out there. So, but what this does is one-to-one meetings help us to really, really understand what's going on because as you all know, it's a very big system. Everything is kind of dispersed and trying to like navigate and figure out who to talk to about what, you know, so these one-on-one meetings are so invaluable. We've learned so much. And we definitely will continue to have these meetings. It's not a one and done. So, and we tell this to all the departments, we'll be meeting with them on a regular basis until finally, maybe, I don't know, five years down the road, we can say that, hey, you know, sustainability is fully integrated into what we do. So with that said, I think, I think that was the last item, right Cindy? Is there anything else at the bottom? That's it. So with that said, I am done with the sustainability report. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Director Morrison. So we can take questions at this time and reminder that first round is 2.5 minutes. I'll just watch for hands for a moment. All right, seen, not seeing any hands, Director Morrison. I just want to thank you for that detail. I appreciate you sharing so much about the grant opportunities and we'll look forward to hearing more and, and seeing more of that tracking that, that you're doing. And of course, as members of this committee, any, if anyone sees any new grant opportunities, you can forward those directly to, to me or Dr. Harris or Director Morrison at any time. And we're pretty active on that. So don't ever hesitate to send something on to us that you think could, there could be potential, big, big and small. There's so many opportunities popping up now. So let, we'll just keep feeding them to the, to the division. All right, so our second agenda item today, 2.2 is Climate Resilient Land Management Through Stormwater Management Strategies. And I'm going to once again recognize Director Morrison for this section of the agenda to introduce our speakers. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. So at this time, we will be addressing, I believe it's Priority Area 7, Climate Resilient Land Management. I don't have, I haven't memorized it here. Forgive me. I'm trying to look for my little feature here. But anyway, it's Priority Area 7 and we have from the operations team, we have Sean Matlock. And Sean, I'm going to introduce your team. I know there's Sean and there's Sheila, Doctor, I'm sorry, Director Sheila Jackson, is she on? Okay. And also Director Sam Stefanelle from operations. And then we also have some representatives from the Clean Water Action Partnerships, but I will hand it over to Sean at this point and he could do a more detailed introduction about the Clean Water Partnership folks.
Oh, good, good, good afternoon. My, I'm Sean Matlock. I'm Director of the Office of Alternative Infrastructure Planning and Development. As part of this, we met Director Sheila Taylor-Jackson, met with us and some members of the Corvius, which is part of the Clean Water Partnership, which is a P3 with the county doing stormwater management and other green infrastructure projects. And they had recommended that former board member Sonia Williams, who is a project program manager with them, join us to help discuss the issues that were related to Section 7 of the CCAP and relationship to stormwater management. And so we have a presentation. Am I able to share? Am I able to share? I think I am. Looks like I am. Just give me a moment. Trying to find my. Okay, this is not easy. Oh, there we go. Share. And then we go to. Okay, so first thing, this is about green infrastructure and our stormwater management to give you an overview of where we are. These were the first four operational actions that we had. One was to conduct a system-wide landscape inventory and development plan for green infrastructure and sustainable landscape management. That was performed or the information was gathered by Sam Stefanelle, Director Stefanelle and the, the, the Department of Building Services, and they put that together. We then had that information. We were supposed to establish a database, a system-wide database, which is now available on the, on the sustainability website. But there was a database that was developed in relationship to that that listed out that, and I'm going to discuss that further on. And then we're supposed to incorporate our stormwater management activities into our school curriculum. And as the, your committee member, Mr. Bell has been working with us with that and that's been going on. And then there was a request to streamline review process for green infrastructure projects and to separate the review process from current site permitting process. And that's going to be the bulk of our discussion. But before I get to it, I want to really talk about what is green infrastructure? So green infrastructure is a network of natural and semi-natural, so I'm sorry, here, I need to move this down, semi-natural areas that use plants, soil and other natural materials to address environmental challenges. Green infrastructure can include stormwater management, which is what we're going to be talking about mostly today, which features the use of plant soil to absorb stormwater in the ground, reducing flooding and polluted water. Landscaping can be, can include impermeable pavements or permeable surfaces. Rainwater harvesting can provide water source and reduce runoff. Green spaces can capture stormwater runoff and provide a place for recreation. And then you have energy generation, the use of natural resources such as sun, wind, water to generate energy. So as you can see, these are some of the types of things that we're doing right now. You, there's like, when you have a field like this, you may have geothermal underneath it. We have a lot of rain gardens that we're now starting to implement and, and different things like that. Bio-retention facilities and the like in order to perform stormwater management. As you can see, we're, we're trying to plant a lot of these so that we have sustainable plantings in them that create biodiversity that encourage birds and insects that are to come into the area and, you know, make the, the entire ecosystem around the school sustainable. We also, as you can see, this is at El Machoa. This is another example of the integration of these systems into it. You have, you know, you have your solar on the roof. Those are your PVs there. You have this landscaping that acts as a terrace to allow the water, the stormwater and other rainwater to be controlled off the site. As you can notice, there are plantings here. Those plantings will also support that sort of the bio-retention type situation. Underneath the fields out here are, are geothermal wells. They're roughly, at that school, they're roughly, I'm sorry, I moved the handle a little bit. They're roughly, where am I? I'm jumping ahead. Sorry about that. My hands slipped there. So you have geothermal wells underneath that field out there. At this school, there are six, I think 1,620 PVs on the roof and over, I think roughly 400 geothermal wells. So it's, it's a big operation. This is the geothermal system inside the building. As you can see there. There are, these are all throughout the building, allowing the water that's being heated through the geothermal system to run through the building and provide heating and cooling throughout the school. And then this is a stormwater system. This is underneath El Machoa. And I just want to give you a sense of what a major stormwater system looks like at one of our schools. Let me go back up here. I'm not. Technology does not love me. One second. Give me a moment here. So you can see, these are very involved systems. Stormwater management is not, not merely a series of pipes that you put underneath a building. These are major infrastructure projects that are utilized to receive and hold stormwater, stormwater so that we don't have that runoff. In fact, this system was so efficient that it drained the stormwater lake that they had in the, in the park that was associated or next to the school system. It just, it just, the school there, it just drained so much water and holds so much water that there was no runoff to go in there and it just literally drained it. And ended up finding out there was a carberry there in the, in the middle of the lake. It was covered in the water. And this is just an example of what we're doing underneath a lot of our buildings now. This is not, this is not unusual, as we'll discuss further on down the line. This is now becoming de rigueur for us. So our green infrastructure database. So now we do have this inventory. Right now, it needs to be updated. We have roughly about 194 green infrastructure projects that are listed on the database at 42 school sites. There are more projects in that, but those, those things that we do have listed are like bio-retention ponds, bio swales, detention structures, flood management, grass swales, green roofs, infiltration trenches, microbioretention ponds, permeable pavements and submerged gravel wetlands. One thing, if you want to go, this is the link that will take you to the database that's currently on the resiliency website. And you'll, and you can look at the list of the various projects that are there. I will note that it does need to be updated. There are, this, this list was created back in January of 2023. And there are a lot of projects that weren't listed and that need to be added to it. And we're going to take some action to make sure that, that, that happens. But our, our new green infrastructure that we are moving forward. So both the Capitol Apartments, which is run by Director Jackson and, and the Office of Alternative Infrastructure or Planning and Development are all expanding our new green infrastructure as part of all of our, our new construction. So to give you an example, at Cherokee Lane, which was a Capitol project, there were 18 stormwater bio and bio retention ponds at that site. It looks like a small golf course. There's so many little dip, you know, bio retention pits there, but they're all have plantings in them. They're all very environmentally friendly, but it, it is part of the, of the requirements that we now have, both at the state and local levels that we really expand the, the stormwater management facilities. And, and as you just saw, the, the stormwater management system underneath El Machoa and on the sides there. And to give you an example, the, the P3 school, Colin Powell Academy built, that we recently just built is even larger. It holds over a million gallons of water. And it was intended to reduce the ever-present flooding that happens down in that part of the county in that 10 Talon area. And so it, it, it was a conjunctive project with the county to, to expand it so we could actually have a major impact, not just for the water running off the site, but also to, to affect the flooding in the area. So these systems not only help with the, the school system with our own issues, but also these are impacting the community at large. So these are major contributors to stormwater management and environmental resiliency within the entire community from Prince George's County. So then both, that's the wrong one. So one of the issues was that it's difficult to streamline these projects. Primarily because they're tied most of the time to either new construction or major construction. And there are multiple agencies that are involved in permitting. And a lot of times the permits have cascading impacts and one permit can't move forward without the other permit. And then to give you an example, we can't tear down a building completely without a fine grading permit. So you can't tear a building down if you don't have a grading permit for what you're going to do afterwards. And so there are, there, and, and one has nothing to do with the other, but they're related in, in the way the system processes permits. You, if you're putting up trees or you're tearing down trees or replacing trees there, you have to get approved by MNCPCC in order to, you know, determine what trees you're going to plant and get a permit related to the number of trees you're going to put. And then that's dependent on where you can tear anything down or even get your, your, your basic permit for your, your grading permits. And then the stormwater systems are all tied to all those permits as well. And so they're all interrelated and intertwined. It makes it difficult to streamline the process. So as, there is some things that we can do and I'll discuss that. And that's more related to what we're doing with the, the Clean Water Partnership. But this is those, that's the primary issue with trying to streamline. And so like I said, one of our permitting solutions is working with, working with the Clean Water Partnership. They're currently working on our sites and, and we're requesting as part of our relationship with them that they be more involved in some of our major projects. In order for them to be involved, they have to both design and construct. And with that, I'm going to hand a little bit of this off to, to former board member Williams and let her talk about the Clean Water Partnership.
Thank you, Mr. Matlock, and thank you, the Climate
Thank you, Mr. Matlock, and uh, thank you, the Climate Action Committee for allowing me this opportunity just to introduce the Clean Water Partnership with you all. It's funny sitting on this side of the camera, I'm used to being on the other side of with Pam, Pamela Boozer Strether. Um, so the Clean Water Partnership has worked in Prince George's County Public Schools for a while, we've been in the school system putting in stormwater management devices for a while. Um, but before I get into that, let me just introduce to you the Clean Water Partnership. We are a program that focuses on engaging the community to improve the stormwater infrastructure throughout the county by installing the green infrastructure using local firms and the local workforce. And with those projects, when they're completed, we have made a positive impact, not just on the environment, but also on the local economy through this public-private partnership. Next slide. We are the first of its kind in the stormwater infrastructure industry. The program is a partnership between the Prince George's County Government and Corvius Infrastructure Solutions, CIS, and we make up the Clean Water Partnership. We were engaged by the county to provide, the county to help them meet a specific mandate from the federal government, that was a consent decree. It required the county to clean up the water that fed the tributaries, tributaries that went to the Chesapeake. And in addition to that, we do other projects such as we plant a lot of trees under our urban treaty program and we work with other uh groups in creating resiliency programs. Next slide. In two thousand sixteen, we began working with the schools to support the county's effort in meeting the consent decree. While we're at the schools, we took advantage of that relationship and we began to support the climate and environmental education of students by creating these outdoor classrooms. These are some of the examples of outdoor classrooms that are in the school system now. And the devices that we place at the school, it gives the students an opportunity to see how these devices function and how they support climate action. Next slide. Currently, we have sixty-two schools that have these green infrastructure devices. Um, we have about seven of the sixty-two that are currently under design and we had, we're starting the design and construction of some others in two thousand twenty-five. Um, we have been all over, we've touched every single district in the county with these uh green infrastructure devices. Next slide. What makes our uh system unique is how we deliver the services. As Mr. Matlock mentioned, uh, there are lots of challenges when trying to go from a concept to actually operating the device. It takes quite a bit of effort from planning it out, getting those plans uh permitted to be allowed to actually put it, put those devices in place. When you're, as he mentioned, when you're doing a new development, it's an easy, it's easier because you're going through that process of permitting, contracting, and designing at the same time. But when you're trying to implement this on an existing uh facility, it gets a little bit difficult. Um, on top of the fact that you're working with an operating facility, you have to meet certain requirements in order to get those devices uh permitted. Our process is, is streamlined. I want, want to take you to really the center portion of this slide where we have planning, design, and construction in different colors. The traditional method of doing this, if this, when the school system does it, they have to go through the planning, designing, and then uh they are procuring the services of construction. Uh, people have to go through the certification and do all of those things uh basically one after the other. Our method of delivery is a little bit different um because we are able to implement several things concurrently. Uh, I think I failed to mention earlier, or maybe I did not go into much detail, but we actually impact small and local businesses and the local uh workforce. Our contract with the county government is that at least fifty percent of the businesses that are, are doing work on our projects have to come from the local work, from the local business industry. And over, up to, over fifty-one percent of the workforce that is working on the actual project have to come from the local workforce. And we have been successful over the last, we're about to hit our tenth anniversary. Over the last ten years, we have met and exceeded those requirements. We're able to do that because we have a mentor protege program that helps small businesses enter into this industry and can grow in this industry. So the, the workforce that's actually doing it, the design engineers and the contractors, at least fifty percent of the businesses and over fifty-one percent of the workforce comes from the local area. And so our impact is, is more than just environmental, is also economic. So when you look at the upper portion of the operational side of this chart, you see where we're talking, when we are in the planning stages, we're prioritizing the schedules, we're prioritizing the local professionals and contractors that will be working on these systems. And we also are able to uh go through the contracting process very early in the stage of the, the planning and the design process, which makes our delivery method a lot sooner. Additionally, after we are done with the, the installing the stormwater management devices, we are actually responsible for maintaining them for thirty years. That is coming in to make sure that they're functioning properly and also that aesthetically, they are, they are well-maintained. So if you can imagine the school system handling that, it, that process is extended because of the requirements that is placed on the school system in this procurement process. But because of our relationship with Prince George's County, we're able to mitigate some of those things because we're able to overlap the, the task. Additionally, there's always a challenge, and you know that I know from being a board member, with funding these projects. Your current method of funding the projects is through the state. Because we would be a partner with the school system, we're able to take on some of that risk of funding the project sooner. And based on our current contractual requirement with the county, the funds can be paid back over, over a period of time versus the funds being put upfront and with, you know, and everything paid before the, the work is done. So the method of delivering this uh service to the school system can be very efficient and effective to get us to a solution much, much quicker. Um, in our experience throughout the county, we were required to meet a consent decree by December uh thirty-first of this year. We're actually meeting the consent decree probably a month or a month and a half in advance because of how we're delivering this solution to the county. So I think that's all I have to share, I would, I'm going to turn it back over to Sean Matlock. And um, if there are any questions, I'm here to answer.
Yeah, one of the wonderful things about what they're able to do for us is, is twofold. One, uh, again, because they're doing the maintenance work uh on the project, they're uh, they're on a different uh permitting schedule, which means that they have a different, their, their, their projects are being evaluated through a different uh methodology. Uh, and so they don't have as many steps to go through in order to get approval. And then again, as, as, as uh, uh, Board Member Williams pointed out, we're able to, because of the budgeting issues related to this, we can reduce some of the costs related to the construction um on our projects because the, the county is budgeting for this, this work as part of the Clean Water Partnership. And then we can reduce that, that from our budget and, and use those funds in other ways uh related to our major capital projects.
And Mr. Matlock?
Yes.
Can you, if you would go back to that slide with the uh delivery method?
Yeah.
The reason we're able to get through the uh, the permitting and regulation, regulatory agencies more quickly is if you look under operations, the compliance portion, we're, we're actually working with uh compliance throughout the entire project from the very start to finish. And we bring on third-party inspectors to certify the work as we go along um to ensure that we're meeting the requirements. Thank you.
And um, with that, I think we're ready for comments and questions.
Yeah, I see that, uh, thank you so much. I see that Mr. Stefanelli has had his hand raised to contribute to this portion of the
Yeah, I just have to say, uh, the Clean Water Partnership has done fantastic work for the school system and they've done a lot of projects that we would not have been able to do on our own. We would have never had the resources and solved some serious problems that the schools in some cases were causing for the neighborhoods. Um, and if you look at our schools, a lot of them, because the contractors that felt the neighborhood had to provide space for schools, they gave us the property next to the local creek because it's harder to, to build there. Uh, William Works is a prime example. When we built the new William Work, there's an extensive stormwater management process that's around that building that solves an issue for the entire neighborhood from, from East West Highway all the way to the creek that runs behind William Work that we've been trying to solve for years. And the county was able to use our property in our construction process to leverage um a system that solves a problem for, for an entire neighborhood. And it's a substantial neighborhood, it's not uh, you're six or seven blocks off of East West Highway and everything's running downhill. We had a terrible erosion problem behind there. Um, so when we do work in our schools, uh, we do solve a problem for the community. Most of the time, we're solving a bigger problem than just the problem in the school. But I have to say, the Clean Water Partnership uh and for being advantageous department, the fact that they're maintaining them for me is astronomical because we do not have the expertise on how to maintain a lot of these properties and they come in and they take care of it. So I just wanted to give them kudos while I had the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Stefanelli, and it's good to see you. Um, we, all of our assets that we put in the ground, they are maintained for aesthetics four times a year and they're inspected for function once a year. So we, we try to stay ahead of the problem to ensure that the, the cost of the repair is low because we're responsible for it. But on top of that, like Mr. Stefanelli said, um, the, the Prince George's County is, is sort of in a bowl or in a valley. So we have a lot of areas that are flooding. And it doesn't matter if you're in the north, central, or south. What we are doing, uh, we, it started out as cleaning the water, but our focus also supports the water quantity and where it goes. Um, slowing down the water prevents erosion. Slowing down the water prevents sediment from reaching the ponds. Being able to direct where the water goes supports the neighborhoods in reducing the flooding outside of the school area.
Or does that conclude the presentation? We can move to discussion?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Well, I, I, I just, you know, want to say thank you um for this excellent presentation. I mean, we, we covered so much ground from, you know, the technical infrastructure and, and understanding that these are significant capital projects um to move towards green infrastructure to the local economy and how this green infrastructure um creates jobs and keeps jobs here um in the future for our uh students in the school system to think about careers in this area of construction and um land management, I think is very exciting. Um, and so with that, with that, I want to open up the floor to questions, uh, two point five minutes per committee member. And I want to note that we do have one more presentation for the meeting today on a curriculum case study. Uh, but I did want to go ahead and have questions now in case our uh team does need to get back to their other priorities. Uh, I thank them for taking time for the committee, but uh, any hands, hands for questions? I see David Noto, please go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so I believe this is a question from Mr. Matlock. In your presentation, you uh mentioned about the landscape uh of the buildings. And I think this might be more related to kind of landscape maintenance than anything else. Who does that? Is that an employee, employees of uh the school system? Is that uh land, uh contractors? Um, and yeah, so I guess that, that would be my, my first question.
So um, it's, it's twofold. Um, in, in some cases, well, threefold actually. Uh, in some cases, uh, when uh the landscaping of, of, of a P three building, uh, it's done by the um, by the, by our, our maintenance, uh, by the um, our, our, our service provider. In the case of a regular school, that, 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 those grounds are serviced by building services. Um, and in the case of uh, 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 infrastructure installed by Clean Water Partnership, it's, it's, it's managed by them.
Thank you.
Great, any other questions? I, uh, I see Christina Quoc, please go ahead, and then Timothy Meyer uh will go now.
Thanks so much. That was a really intriguing and excellent presentation. Really happy to get the ins and outs of PCCPS's approach to stormwater management. I, I had a question. I've seen some really interesting um maps, um, both, I think, probably, I think from NOAA or the EPA that demonstrate models that indicate areas that are prone to flooding um in a, in a, you know, adverse climatic event. And just given kind of what we've seen with the hur- two hurricanes in the last couple of weeks, I'm really curious in terms of how PDCPS is planning for sort of the areas that are most prone to flooding. Um, and whether, you know, like how, how is, how are, how is the prioritization? It sounded like a lot of the new green infrastructure is really tagged to whatever um has already been in the infrastructure pipeline and um, you know, whether that is uh based on flood prone need versus need for just new cap, new infrastructure. You know, I'm just curious a little bit of the decision-making process and that, and whether there's a plan for these flood prone areas. Thanks.
So because we're countywide, Prince George's County is the largest landholder in the, in the county. We're, we're the largest landholder. Um, and as a result, um, a lot of our projects are built into plans that um DPW and MNCPCC and a lot of other uh organizations have already developed. But um, they, they only get done in relationship to construction that we have planned in relationship to our, the school's development or redevelopment. And so when we are coming into an area, usually the stand, the new standard that they're now holding us to is a hundred-year flood um uh element. So if we, if the, if, if whatever the requirement would be for a hundred-year event, that is what we are now being asked to design for. And so um, so the system that we have at Achoa, for an, an example, the reason why I drained that pond, or that lake, as they were calling it, is because it, it's intended to pick up all that extra moisture. And as a result, it just completely, you know, took everything out uh of there. And so these systems are very powerful, very um large systems. Uh, and, and, and they are uh having a, a much, a greater impact. Now, I know Clean Water Partnership is more in line with trying to meet the county overall goals. Um, we are just really sticking towards what we're developing for the school system, but they are having a larger impact on the general community.
Yeah, from um a maintenance standpoint, the partnerships like the Clean Water Act, Clean Water Partnership, they're able to go into facilities that we are not planning on rebuilding anytime soon and solve those types of problems. Most of those types of flooding problems are in old neighborhoods with old facilities. with old facilities and the infrastructure just cannot withstand the additional rain that we're, we're getting now and the, the amount of rain that we get. And they've been able to come in and solve a lot of issues for the school system. So as long as we continue those types of partnerships, I think we'll, we'll continue to improve our properties and the neighborhood in general.
Thank you so much.
Can I go ahead, Tim?
Uh, I believe Director Stephanelli actually answered at least part of my question uh, preemptively, which is, I was going to make the comment that I think we have, we're making a lot of progress and we have a very good plan to tackle stormwater management with all the new construction. But I wanted to specifically ask Director Matlock, um, just to talk for a minute about new construction versus retrofitting uh, our, our, our old buildings and specifically just what some of the limitations, the biggest limitations are when you're dealing with the older buildings and um, Director Stephanelli said, schools that are in neighborhoods, but also some of the opportunities. Um, and uh, former board member Williams can feel free to jump in here as well in terms of just an example or two of what you do with older buildings.
Well, just to, to give you the problem issue, uh, and it's related to new development as well because we're developing on old sites, right? So uh, we have, I think, uh, Director Jackson's right now dealing with the issue. One of our schools is built closer to a stream. Uh, and there's been new MDE rules that now require us to build further away from that stream. And so now we have to try to figure out how we were going to move the school around so that it doesn't interfere with those rules. Um, and so that, that, that goes into a lot of the planning on how the structure is going to work and whether or not you could build infrastructure in a way so that you can guarantee that it won't interfere or the runoff won't roll into the stream. Uh, and so that, that's requiring us a, a lot of times to be thinking about the sites um, based on those, some of those buildings that we have um, are built over underground streams. Um, why they did that, I have no idea. No one can tell me why they would do that. But they built over top of underground streams. You had one school that the, the, the literally the service area would flood and fill up with water. I mean, it was terrible. But these are the types of things that we're trying to work around that we can't always address them. Because again, as you saw from the photo, the, the, the video I showed you, proper underground uh, stormwater management systems that go underneath the buildings now, you couldn't take the building up and put those down there now if you're retrofitting a building. So what we end up doing is a lot of what we did at Cherokee Lane, which is building bioretentions and, and small ponds all the way around the building. And I get fru, I got frustrated when I was capital director because I live in Frederick. And there's a school that is literally a mile and a half from my home that they just built and they have one pond, one big pond, and that's it. Um, and, and that school is smaller, I mean, bigger than, than Cherokee Lane and I have eighteen ponds. So I mean, it's, it, it, the requirement is because of where we are and uh, the, the nature of our environment, that, that's the impact that we have. So instead of being able, uh, we're, we're did another facility where we put a um, a, a modular facility outside of an existing school. And uh, they required us to do what looked like a small Olympic sized swimming pool worth of, of, of stormwater management, even though we were, it was being built on um, on, 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 on the parking lot, even though we're placing it on the parking lot, they still required us to put in more extensive because we're not just solving the stormwater management issues for the school. They take these opportunities for us to solve stormwater management for the, the neighborhood. And, and Jill adds more to that, please.
Part of the difficulty of dealing with existing facilities and retrofitting is a lot of times we are not causing the problem. The problem may be of the outfall is not operating properly on the property adjacent to us that may belong to park and planning. Uh, or it may be county property or some other in- institution owns the end result of our water flow and we can't go in and do that work on that property. It takes a partnership and that's why the Chesapeake Bay Foundation, Clean Water Partnership, those folks come in, put us all together and we work together and they kind of are the catalysts that make the whole thing happen. It's a big picture, uh, especially when you're dealing with existing structures around people's houses, around existing schools. It's a really big picture and it takes um, a lot of uh, different entities to make that happen. And if we go in and do something and then Sean's people or Shale's people come in and build a new school, all the money we spent on that infrastructure may not suffice for the new building and we have to do it all over again. So it's a balancing act to make sure we're, we're spending the money prudently and getting the biggest bang for our buck and not wasting funding by um, being a, I, I, I say overzealous and have, like the Clean Water Partnership has, they have an extensive planning process. Everybody touches it. So there aren't any surprises at the end of the road. You, I'm sure you've seen where they come in and they pave the road and then two days later, WSSC digs it up and fixes a manhole. That's the type of thing we don't want to see happen. So that's why it, it's, it takes time to work through this process to make sure we touch everyone and we do it right the first time.
Yeah, and let me add, um, you've probably seen throughout the county where all of a sudden you see a bunch of people working in the woods and knocking down trees and uh, fixing a stream. That is the Clean Water Partnership doing work throughout the county. If you can imagine a small uh, teacup with a spout at the end, that's the watershed. The teacup is the watershed and then the water is supposed to go through that spout and empty the teacup. Our challenge is that we've built things that impact the spout. And because of that, the water isn't able to leave out of the teacup and it floods. And over time, throughout development in the county, different people have built impediments in front of that spout and so you begin to get flooding. That is roads, uh, houses, you know, other things that impact the release of the water. So what we do with our work in the Clean Water Partnership is we find ways and find spaces within that cup, which is the watershed, to hold the water and release it, gather the water from places where we don't want it to be, hold it there and release it so that we guide the water. And the storm event that Mr. Matlock is talking about, you'll hear things in the news about the A Storm. And that is the one hundred year storm that basically has increased the amount of rainfall in an hour, a certain percentage. So now we have to design uh, our plans to hold that additional water because that's what we're expecting with climate change. And so when we create these devices to hold the water and release it where we want it to go, we put trees in those devices. The trees help absorb some of that water. Um, and we find ways to use it, landscaping and other things to use that water. We're then controlling the water and helping that whole watershed area deal with it. So in that watershed, in that teacup, there are schools. And if we're able to use the school as a, a, a place to put a device, then that is perfect. And, and what Mr. Stephanelli is talking about, because we, we have this aggressive program with renovating our old and aging schools, we are working in partnership to, to say, oh, you know, this school is about to be renovated or uh, gonna be, have a major renovation or, or changed out. We won't do it there. Let's find another place. So we're trying to be thoughtful in how we deliver these um, the services. And because we're able to move quickly, we can match the schedule of um, the school system when they're doing these major renovations and get it done. And when they get done, we'll be all in alignment and have a successful outcome.
Uh, thank you all for the answers and I'll just add that as someone whose school sits at the top of a hill and every single time it rains, the water just flows down away from people throughout the neighborhood. Uh, that's why the issue is, but that's why stormwater management has been so, so much on our radar at Mount Rainier Elementary. But I, it, it also helps me understand some of the, the challenges that there are certain things like being on top of a hill that we just cannot change. So, but thank you all.
You're welcome.
And I have to tell you, Mount, Mount Rainier is a prime example of an old neighborhood that was not designed to deal with what you guys are dealing with now and it's, it's a challenge for us as well.
Yeah, well, thank you all so much for this great discussion. I don't see any more, more hands. I just want to, you know, once again, um, you know, reiterate some of the, you know, great, you know, learning points here about, you know, what we, you know, what, one thing that when we started this work group for this plan, we were going, we were looking at clean energy and solar panels and um, uh, and uh, Joseph Jakuta, who's, who's with us today. He and I had some deep discussions about, you know, are we going to go beyond clean energy and do land ma, you know, land management and s- stormwater management as part of this climate change action plan? And I remember being very dug in on this, you know, that we had too many flooded playgrounds and um, you know, that, that we needed to, to do this comprehensively and um, I just want to say I'm, I'm so grateful to Joseph's partnership, you know, that we were able to, you know, make that a priority because I think we see incredible work here. And one, and I, I remember as a board member, you know, oftentimes we would get some of that criticism about, what's the matter with the school system? You can't manage this. And I think through this process, we could really change that narrative and really understand. Something I couldn't say then was, well, we were basically given the land that couldn't make a profit. And that land, and, and I think Mr. Matlock or Mr. Stephanelli, when you said, we got the land next to the streams and the rivers and that's a little piece that I didn't have in my narrative, you know, that that was consistent. So I think sometimes like we have to really help take our audience back to kind of the beginning when it comes to this. And, and what, you know, was huge challenge, I think now is PG CPS is a leading partner, solving problems. I just, uh, it's so great to hear that the Colin Powell project was able to have such a significant impact on Tantalan and, and help solve that community, the community issues. So we really have changed not only the, not just the narrative, but the, the actual work so that we have this new narrative. So I want to just thank everyone for being here today and bringing your expertise and uh, to Clean Water Partnership. And Sonia Williams, thank you for leading in the community and um, Director, uh, Matlock, Stephanelli. And um, see that we had Director Jackson here, here as well. Um, so thank you all so much. And with that, we will move to our next agenda item. And I am pleased to uh, recognize and invite onto the screen a team from the Neighborhood Design Center, which is a, and they'll, they'll, they'll give a little more background. Uh, some of you may know is a, a really significant nonprofit in uh, Baltimore and offices in Hyattsville and Prince George's County that has been working with communities and PG CPS for decades um, on uh, infrastructure designed for thriving communities. And so we have with us today Ms. Laura Robinson, uh, Michaela Ada and Jenny Smeltzer, who will lead our next case study presentation of work they're doing with the students at Central High School. Um, handing it over. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pam. That was a very well said introduction. We appreciate it. Um, hello everyone, I'm Laura Robinson. Um, Jenny, are you able to share our slides?
I believe I am, yeah.
Okay. Um, so as Pam said, we're with the Neighborhood Design Center. Um, and we are a nonprofit in Maryland since the sixties and we've been working in Prince George's County um, for the last thirty years or more actually. Um, and we do, uh, we are landscape architects, architects, um, community planners and we support community engaged design processes, processes um, at schools, at parks um, and all throughout Prince George's County um, for communities that need it. Um, and so we're really excited to tell you about this project that we've been working on um, for a few years now, um, which is the Green Infrastructure and Stormwater BMP Design Program. Um, and we did this pilot program at Central High School. Um, so we'll give you a little bit of background um, on this project and the grant that funded it. Um, and then I will hand it off to my colleagues to go through the actual um, program that happened at Central um, and we'll give you a little wrap up um, at the end. Um, so this project actually um, came from the Climate Change Action Plan Working Group and is related to recommendation number seven. Um, so this grant was actually submitted right around the time that the uh, Climate Change Action Plan, I believe, was um, like ratified by the school board. Um, and so our, one of our past um, team members, Maria DeRuse, was the subject matter expert for creating um, recommendation number seven, which is to commit to climate resilient land management. So NDC has been working on, on that particular arena for a few years now. Um, and so with support from the Schmidt Center School Board um, and the, the working group, we were awarded a grant through, through the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, which is to implement um, a lesson plan program at PG CPS schools rooted in an interactive green infrastructure design process for the students and the school community. Um, and so this really follows um, the operal, operational actions of number seven. Um, it actually hit all three of these. Um, but really that priority of incorporating the stormwater management activities into the school curriculum, um, which is what our, our lesson plans do and linking it to the Maryland literacy, environmental literacy standards um, and fostering that school culture of environmental stewardship and maintaining those school sites of those BMP uh, projects um, at their schools. Um, and so for this specific project where we created this program of lesson plans, the goals were to um, create these green infrastructure design um, plans for a school. So using the students to create a design for a school of a green infrastructure master plan. Um, and then through that process, engaging and educating the school community around that green infrastructure. So all of those BMPs and the environmental stewardship necessary to keep those BMPs uh, functional. Um, then through this process, we also created implementable maintenance plans. So including maintenance in the design process was really key because to keep these BMPs functioning, they require maintenance and they also require um, to be right sized um, to the capacity of the school. So that was really a big piece of the design process as well. Um, and then the last and really important goal is that this introduces students to um, STEM careers. So engineering, landscape architecture, architecture, um, horticulture um, and, and anything else related to earth sciences. So this is a really great opportunity for students to get hands-on, a real world experience um, of STEM careers directly related to green infrastructure. Um, so I will pass it off to Michaela, who will um, talk about the actual pilot program um, at Central High School.
Yeah, hi everyone. Um, it's great to meet you and actually see some familiar faces in the room. Um, so yes, we were fortunate enough to pilot the green infrastructure lesson plans at Central High School with Ms. Mahajan and her IV Environmental Systems and Society class. And so if we go to the next slide, we'll see some pictures of them in action. Um, so this is an upper level science class and last year's cohort had fifteen students that we were working with. Um, something advantageous about the class was that it was an elective course um, that had some flexibility to dedicate four weeks um, specifically to this project. Um, and so in those four weeks, go ahead to the next slide. Um, we took students through a basic landscape architecture design process that began with data collection on current campus conditions and challenges and then culminated into a final campus design made up of green infrastructure solutions that um, uh, that addressed the challenges they identified. Um, and the research was performed um, together as a class, but each student uh, produced their own uh, campus design that they presented at the end of the project. Um, and we do want to highlight um, that research component, actually. There were two uh, research typologies that the students performed. The first was field research that relied on observing and recording the impact of earth systems on campus. And so things like sun and shade patterns, hydrology, drainage, tree canopy, biodiversity, et cetera. Um, and then the other typology was um, community engagement. Uh, so we created a Google form survey together that the students would, uh, that the students then took to their peers to see if their observations um, aligned with what the wider community had experienced. Um, okay, next slide, yeah. So that combination of analyzing um, earth and social sciences led each student to their campus designs. We have some great examples here. Um, and while each design was unique, there were also alignments and the big challenges that they recognized. um, on campus. And so if we took the next slide, um, they all immediately recognized that cooling was an issue, particularly the athletes in the class had mentioned that, um, cooling was a nuisance on the way from the school to certain, uh, sports facilities. Uh, they also mentioned that outdoor spaces on campus often lacked shade. And so it was uncomfortable for students to spend time in the outdoor areas available to them. And then, um, in a similar vein, they noticed a lack of beauty and biodiversity in spaces that students primarily used, which was a contrast to the, the front-facing parts of the school. Um, and so their designs not only saw a green infrastructure as a means to address stormwater, but also an opportunity to, to elevate social spaces and student life on campus. Um, and that perspective from the students is such a powerful factor, you know, to include in campus design, especially as we work to create more climate resilient, um, PG CPS landscapes. Um, and so as we went through the lesson plans, NDC, um, our team actually was listening and observing and designing alongside them. Um, and so going back to that first, uh, program goal, this is the Green Infrastructure Concept Plan that we created, um, informed not only by like our professional lens, but also the student work and the challenges that they felt were most important to address for an improved campus.
Thanks, Michaela. And so in the student, in the interactions with the students, we, um, addressed these concepts. Green infrastructure, stormwater BMPs and maintenance, community engagement through the Google survey, landscape architecture as a career field and human impacts on the environment. And then the students in their own pride, practice, this is one of the examples of one of the students' presentations. They, the skills that they practiced included the field data collection and mapping, critical thinking skills of deciding where they saw problems and where they could provide a solution. Landscape design fundamentals, which is really all of what we're talking about here. Community engagement, where they talk to their, uh, fellow students and also teachers and sometimes family. Design concept development and then public speaking and presentation skills, which was the last piece that they presented in class with us. I'm sorry, I skipped one here. And then our, um, part of our point was to address relevant topics within the school system. So addressing the Maryland environmental literacy standards was important, and we actually touched on standards one, two, four, five, six, seven, and eight. The environmental issues, interactions of earth systems, populations, communities and ecosystems, human and natural resources. And you can see that the last three in order to give teachers, you know, the actual resources that they, that they need to use in the classroom to address issues of curriculum. And also we addressed the next gen standards. And instead of reading off all the letters and numbers, we have a couple of categories here. Creating evidence-based design solutions to mitigate environmental challenges and then analyzing the relationship between the environment and earth's processes and humans. So then we got a couple of quotes from Mrs. Mahajan, based on her experience and the students' experience, what she saw. She was, um, with the class the whole time. We sort of did this together as part of our pilot project. We would like this to be something that teachers can take and use without us being in the classroom. But our first round was all three of us in the classroom and Mrs. Mahajan was very helpful to us. And she said, the most rewarding part is when students come to you and say, Mrs. Mahajan, that experience was wonderful. We should do it again. And, and actually there were two years of classes, as Michaela said, there were juniors and seniors. So potentially some of the juniors wanted to go to again this year. I'm not sure. And then as educators, you take chances to expose your students to real world situations and work with subject matter experts. The approach methodology and experts offer unique experiences. So we really enjoyed having that real world experience with them, offering that to them and interacting with them. Laura, do you want to do takeaways?
Absolutely. Um, so you know, what we really found through all of this is that it was a real world, hands-on way for students to understand concepts that they are currently living through. Um, so understanding the built environment around them and also the climate change concerns that are happening, um, and impacting, impacting their future. Um, they're the ones that are going to be dealing with these major challenges to our environment. Um, and so it was a, it was really exciting to see the students engaged um, and being able to, you know, work like a landscape architect or, or a stormwater engineer, um, for the period of the project. Um, it was also, um, something that's really important is a key way for the students to have a say about the built environment around them. So through this process, they were given agency about how they might design their school campus, what their values are, um, and how they might change the built environment around them. Um, and then also something really great about this lesson plan program is that, you know, landscape architecture and stormwater management, um, are really complex processes. Um, but the students were able to go through the entire, um, process because they were divided into, um, digestible lesson plans, but also those lesson plans really related to them and their experience at their school. So it was a, a good way to get them to understand these complex systems, um, and ideas. Um, so what comes next? Um, so we are actively, um, applying to, uh, more grants to improve and expand the program. Um, so you know, one thing that we found is that it would be really great if the students would be able to implement um, a project on their campus after they designed it. Um, so we're hoping to find um, a way to improve the program so that we can have students implement a small project, maybe, uh, tree plantings or a conservation garden, um, on their campus, and then also be able to include lesson plans around the maintenance of those, um, pieces. So not just including maintenance in the design process, but actually teaching them about the maintenance of these green spaces. Um, and so to do that, we obviously have to pursue some additional funding. Um, so if we're awarded, um, through the Chesapeake Bay Trust Grants that we've, um, applied to, we would be able to start planning in the spring so that we could have, um, a fall program kickoff in 2025. Um, and I think that's all we have for you. So if you have any questions for us, we'd love to answer them. Um, or if we can provide any more information in any way.
Oh, thank you so much. That's fantastic. Uh, so great to get insights into the project. So I'm, I'm going to look for hands. Would anyone like to go first? There we go. I see Christina Quoc, uh, followed by Sonia Williams.
Thanks again. I loved hearing this presentation and just the real, uh, the real world, world experiences that you all were able to open up, uh, for the students. I think that's just a really great example of the kind of curricular integration we should be seeing as PG CPS and schools around the country are greening, you know, the very physical infrastructural environments around them. So it's an excellent case study of that. And just wanted to applaud you all for such great work. Um, I'm curious, um, what, and perhaps this is not necessarily a question for you all. Maybe it's a question for PG CPS, um, folks, but what would be the resources required to do thing, do, do very similar projects like this to create lesson plans? That, because, and this was very particular to, I guess, stormwater, sort of identifying stormwater management solutions and that kind of thing. But there are so many types of climate actions that students could be taking in their neighborhoods and in their communities, at their schools. And I'm curious what, what might be the resources that are required to really bring that to scale? And could there be components of what you all have developed here that could be almost universal in terms of process, right? You talked about the skills. You talked about the alignment to the curriculum, to the standards and sort of the process through which students engage in research and then identify and develop solutions. So I'm curious, like, how can we take something like this that is such a, like a, a gold star in terms of an example of what could happen and really scale that at the level that's needed, um, to just bring this to all students, all years of schooling, right? Um, like, yeah, I'm curious. Yeah, maybe that's too big of a question, but I love hearing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, it's, it's a really fun project. So we actually, through this process, um, created a toolkit from it, um, which includes all of the lesson plans, how to do them. Um, and it also includes some lesson learns. So some kind of like tips that we learned along the way to like better improve it if someone's doing it again. Um, I, I can't answer the question about scaling up for all of PG CPS, but it is something, you know, that we intended to, we, we want to expand it and be able to continue to do this and support, um, more classrooms and being able to do this.
Right. Great. Fantastic. Um, uh, we'll go to Sonia Williams, followed by David Noto. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strather, for allowing me to have a comment, even though I'm not on the, on the committee. I just wanted to comment that when we are talking about the Clean Water Partnership, the Neighborhood Design Center is an integral partner in helping us to design the classrooms. They've designed some amazing classrooms throughout the county. And I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them and thank them for their work.
Thank you so much. Yeah, we love, we really appreciate Sonia and, and everyone at CWP and continuing the treating and teaching program because it's such a vital, vital program for the schools.
Yeah, that's, that's great. I'm so happy you, you are all together in, in this meeting today. To bring, to bring that, to explain more of those partnerships, because I think many of us who are parents and have schools that have experienced treating and teaching, um, certainly are aware of, you know, had the opportunity to work with both teams. So thank you. Uh, David Noto?
Thanks. Hi. Um, my question is kind of piggybacking off of what Christina was asking, um, just a second ago. Specifically, I was curious about kind of what y'all are doing related to, um, in whatever curriculum, in your, uh, work with students, getting them involved and kind of get knowing about what, um, how bringing native biodiversity into, um, some of these works. So my wife is a professional horticulturist and she has a tendency to grumble to me about, um, what she describes as biodiversity blindness. Um, and how people kind of go, oh, it's green. It's good enough. Um, when it comes to things that are planted in various, uh, buildings, whatever. And how do we make that not a thing anymore? Is I suppose, um, my question to y'all. Thanks.
Yeah. Um, yeah. So biodiversity and, and, um, so actually our lesson plans, so you know, they're, they're categorized as green infrastructure, but they also include like, um, all of the BMPs and, um, design um, ideas that we walked through the students with included, um, tree canopy, conservation gardens, pollinator gardens. So part of that site inventory process, um, and, um, the design process was talking about the habitat improvements and the environmental improvements of biodiversity. And so Jenny and Michaela could probably talk a little bit more about that, but improving, um, the green spaces. So not just, you know, saying like, oh, it's fifty of the same shrubs that were good to go, but really creating those biodiverse environments that have the native plants that are better suited for the environment and easier to maintain. That's a key piece of, of those lesson plans as well. Um, but, and obviously something that I think, um, all of the schools would be, would be well served to, to enact.
I have to say from a maintenance standpoint, uh, one of our challenges is the perception of the community. Uh, they like to see a school that looks like Disney World, nice straight off beds with azaleas and the same type of plants over and over and over again. And when we do this, it's not necessarily not as uh, aesthetically pleasing, but it's different. And once you get past the difference, I think we're okay. But sometimes it's a challenge for us to get past that difference. That, that has been some, one of our biggest problems.
That's a great point. And I think that's why it's so important to teach students about it so that, you know, as they're, as they're growing up, they, they understand, you know, the difference in, in native plants and non-native. And also, you know, maybe they can teach their parents about it as well. But that is totally true. You know, I think the aesthetic of a rain garden is not what everybody wants to see. So that's certainly, um, a valid, a valid concern.
Thanks very much.
Yeah, thank, thank you all. And thank you, Mr. Stefanelli, for adding in that, that additional layer of, of the community uh, response to these changes in, on the, on the school grounds. Um, Christina, you have a second round question?
No, sorry. I forgot to lower my hand.
Oh, okay. Uh, any, any more hands? Oh, I see Timothy Meyer.
I, I don't really have a question as much as just a comment, which is echoing that we are, we worked at Mount Rainier Elementary, had worked with Neighborhood Design Center. I want to say it was probably six, seven years ago, uh, on creating a toolkit. It predated my time as a PTO leader, which is now in year six. So, uh, it's, it's been, was a while ago, but we are still reaping the benefits from our work with you. Um, we had come out of the project with a fifty-three page toolkit of ideas that we've been implementing page by page as we go along. And a lot of the things that you talked, that we were just talking about a few minutes ago, um, like we now have relaunched a garden club at the school where we have kids as an after-school program actually learning about, uh, not only planting vegetables, but learning about native versus non-native. So um, just wanted to throw in a supportive comment of all the work that Neighborhood Design Center does, because we, we are still making our way through your fifty-three page toolkit ourselves at Mount Rainier Elementary.
That's wonderful. Yes, we love Mount Rainier Elementary, um, and always try to support over there if we can.
Well, we'd love to, we'd love to have you sometime stop, stop by and see some of the, um, before afters of what we have done over the last.
Yeah, definitely. We will.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Tim. I, I'm a, a former parent of a student while that was going on. And it certainly um, was a great, great experience and influenced me as a board member. I think a lot of what opportunities you have as a parent and parent leader, um, you know, you could really keep building, building upon in PG CPS. And I've always appreciated that. Um, I, I just, I wanted to give a quick shout out to Ms. Mahajan. Um, she is definitely um, an incredible educator. I had a chance to meet her at the Student Environmental Alliance Summit and her enthusiasm and energy for this work, not only for her own students, but for students throughout PG CPS and particular our, our high school alliance network and, and middle schools. Um, she's such a great leader. And I, I imagine, and, and I, I see Donald, Donald Bell's with us. You know, he is now the, um, coordinator of, you know, basically the director of science for all of pre-K to twelve now in the Division of Academics, uh, who's in really important link for all this, this work that, you know, that, as we identify educators, they can also be peers in other school buildings to help, you know, explain how the process went, how a pilot can then, like, say this pilot can move to more high schools. So one thing that we, that Donald Bell has really done over the years is really build that, that network. So I want to thank him uh, for providing the opportunities for educators to, uh, raise their hand and have the chance to work, work on these great projects. So, uh, Donald, I don't, I don't, I see you on the screen, but I don't know if you're able to join. Oh, great. Maybe you want to say a few words about these, these types of partnerships and the educators and how these come about?
Yeah, absolutely. So, um, appreciative of, of all the partners throughout the district, uh, especially those on the call this evening. Um, there were a lot of times I wanted to jump in. I said, I'm going to exceed two and a half minutes if I start talking. Um, but just a, a, a few, uh, with Neighborhood Design Center, I was a, a part of the process of connecting, uh, Neighborhood Design Center with Ms. Mahajan at Central High School. And that was so awesome to see that, that program unfold. Uh, matter of fact, Central High School, shout out to them and Ms. Mahajan. I believe I'm getting this correct. They just received the Golden Trial, um, award, uh, from Prince George's County Government. Um, and a, a big component of that was the work with Neighborhood Design Center. And I, I go back twenty, twenty years, uh, almost. And I, I go back 20, 20 years, almost, with working with Neighborhood Design Center when we were planning stuff out at Gwynne Park High School. And to the, all of the different programs that are offered through the Clean Water Partnership, from the Student Environmental Alliance Summit with Anacostia Watershed and Corvus and Clean Water Partnership, to opportunities like the Go Green Grant, which is offered through part of that treating and teaching suite as well. That provides our educators an opportunity that if they have a student-driven project on their campus that they've identified, that they can submit for funding for a small-scale project of them and their students choosing. And another excellent outlet as well. And then just last night, so yesterday evening, as part of our Bio-Geochemical Systems Course, which is for many of our students, their ninth-grade science course, they receive stormwater EnviroScape models. So it's a, a watershed model that they can interact with, and they have lessons embedded in their Bio-Geochemical Systems Course to support explorations with those models. And so all, all of those are parts of those partnerships that we've been building over the years. And, you know, so happy to continue them in the work with the Science Office, along with the Schmitzen.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you being able to jump in and, and give some more context to, to the educators and the projects. And of course, even more to Neighborhood Design Center's impact on the system. So we will conclude this portion of the agenda. Once again, I want to thank Laura, Jenny, and Michaela for your presentation. I want to congratulate the students on their, their great work. Look forward to hearing, you know, hearing from them in the future and see how many go, I always love to hear if they go into the field, you know, after these great experiences. And so it's all very, very exciting, and we couldn't do it without you. So thank you so much, and we do not have any other official agenda items this evening. And before I move to closing, I just want to note to everyone that this Saturday is the 10th Annual Green Summit of Prince George's County and the Department of the Environment at David C. Driscoll Community Park on Hamilton Street in Hyattsville. And our very own student members of this group will be part of that presentation. And my, I would expect you'll see quite a few folks who've been with us on the Climate Change Action Plan Work Group will also be presenting, those who are experts in this network of the county helped us with this plan. So it's a great time to reconnect with the many, many organizations and people who are invested in our success with the Climate Change Action Plan. So I hope you will check that out, and I will look forward to seeing you there if you can make it. And let's see here. The next meeting will be on December 18th, 2024, 4:30 PM. And please continue to check the PGCPS Board webpage for more information and updates. We will add to the Board Docs presentations from this evening so that you can help share this great information. And again, I want to thank everyone for the meaningful discussions today. If there's no further business, the time is now 6:10 and the October 16, 2024 Climate Change Action Plan Ad Hoc Committee meeting is adjourned. So thank you all so much and have a great evening.
Somebody has their hand up.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. Online?
That's me, sorry. Quick request. Is there a way we can get a copy of the PowerPoint so we can have them uploaded to Board Docs, please?
Yes.
Yeah, who should I email them to? Actually, I can send you the link.
Yes, thank you.
Who should, who should I send it to?
You can send it to Cindy dot Adlin.
Got it.
PGCPS.
You'll get it, you'll get it.
All right, great. All right. Well, thank you so much. We are, we are adjourned. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Take care, everyone.